Good evening. This is the December 20th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the town of Newcastle. Mr. Secretary?
First, we have Torgeson, which is a request for an extension for a previously approved application. Is anybody here for that?
No, I don't think so.
No, okay. But we did get a letter from them, and I'll leave it in our capable chairman's hand.
All those in favor of the six-month extension, please vote in the affirmative.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That's six months to start work and then a year to finish, is it?
Yes, yes. Yep.
We also have -- is anybody here for the Hakim?
Oh, okay.
Oh, you are here.
Yeah, they are, but the attorney is not -- their attorney is not here yet.
We'll hold off on that. It's not a problem. Okay. Next is Campfire Club.
Good evening. Ward French, good to see you all again. Hugh Wiley, club's president, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman, just in the -- so in the interim, from since the last meeting, in the interim, there were a memorandum issued by the planning board with a referral that contains some additional information, and also the town engineer, Mr. Siole issued his memo, setting forth a number of conditions he would like included in the resolutions. And in speaking with the director of planning, it was determined that the board should, you know, should have an understanding of those and hear from the town engineer before we draft the resolution to make sure we have a complete understanding of all the conditions that should be in the resolutions. After hearing from Mr. Siole, if you have any additional questions for the applicant or Mr. Siole, feel free to, you know, or if there are any concerns you have about additional conditions you might want included, assuming that you're comfortable with the -- still comfortable with the application, it would be appropriate to take a final straw poll again regarding SECR and whether you want to issue a negative declaration and then direct us to draft a resolution on that issue, and then take a final straw poll on the special permit, amended special permit, directing us to draft a resolution, either approving or disapproving that, as you recall, last month you were still in favor, but we just wanted to make sure, given these additional -- the additional information, you were still comfortable with that.
Okay. Bob, do you want to come?
Yes, as Eric so eloquently stated. Good evening, by the way. I prepared this memo just to try to clarify certain items of the plans. As submitted, the latest ones have been substantial, they're all complete, in my opinion, as far as stormwater engineering and steep slopes, and I just outlined these, which I believe, in my opinion, could be put in as conditions. Stormwater comments, ST1 through ST5, as my memo says on the last page, they can be put in as conditions of approval on the planning board because they're the approving authority for the stormwater. And on the general comments, GC2, GC3, GC4, GC5, and GC6, which are basically general notes, they can be put in as conditions into the zoning board resolution, and I will be working with Adriana for the zoning board resolution. I'll be working with Janice for the planning board resolution. So these really are just minor comments, once we get down to a certain point, that they'd be just conditions prior to either the signing of the plat for the planning board, prior to the BP, or prior to the CL.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments for Bob?
Yeah, I mean, Bob, it looks like some of the things that you mentioned might be conditions, but the other things look like they should be revisions to the plans, which are going to be, you know?
Basically, when they're minor revisions, I usually put those in as conditions prior to a BP, if they're minor in nature, such as these. If there's anything substantial, which all the substantial items as far as revisions to the plans have been done already by the applicant, and I'm satisfied with those revisions, and these are just very minor in nature, technical items, and they can always be put in as a condition of prior to the BP, in my opinion, which is not a big issue. This is very -- this is how we generally work it with the planning board, and I believe you do the same with the zoning board.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Michael?
Okay.
Yep. So as far as campfires concerned, you're in agreement with the?
Well, there's only one thing that I just want a clarification on, that relates to the exercise requiring us to close the main gate during those nights, and I just find it a little bit maybe, a little heavy-handed, that if we're going to actually put the amount of effort and money, spend the amount of money that we're going to be planning to do to create the sightlines, which is, you know, in excess of $75,000 to improve the town road at that area, I don't, I see it as kind of a redundancy. Why would we go ahead and improve the sightlines for safety purposes, but then be required to go and use a separate entrance? So I thought that this might be a time at least to ask the question, so I could understand why that needs to be a condition, because I think that's a little -- we've, as you know, tried to accommodate in every way, shape, and form, in doing this major substantial sightline improvement, which is a substantial dollar amount, in addition to hopefully satisfying concerns at an area where there's never actually been an accident, that I thought it might be worth just asking if there's any way we could have relief on that requirement, particularly the fact that we wouldn't want to also lock that gate during an event, because we think, quite frankly, that that's a probably a potential problem in and of itself, that if that was ever locked.
So there's no -- that entrance or exit, that doesn't come into play as it relates to egress from the site in the event of?
Are we talking about the main entrance or the?
Yes, the main entrance.
Well, I think now that?
And we're addressing, just to interrupt, I'm sorry, Bob, that we're actually addressing both. I mean, we've actually, all good suggestions, and we're, as you know, fully on board with it. We'll have both entrances, but it just seems to me that if the main entrance is going through a major improvement to address the concerns, that we should be able to utilize that, because it is, quite frankly, just an aesthetic thing more than anything else. So if we address the safety issue, the aesthetic would be to our benefit to use the main gate.
My recommendation was geared towards really construction with the heavier trucks.
Oh, absolutely. 100 percent.
That's on my GC2. That's the only recommendation I had to put as a condition.
Right, and I just wanted to be clear, during construction, 100 percent, there will not be a truck coming through the main gate.
That was my main concern as far as safety, but I think all the other activities are fine, because they're going to do a great job. We met out there with your engineers, and they're going to clear the sightlines and make it meet all the ASH TO code, so I'm confident that the sightlines will be good around that for normal use.
Mr. Chairman?
But construction, I would like to see the?
Yeah, we're in agreement with that.
I wouldn't want to see that front entrance locked, ever, you know, you don't want it locked, because we want emergency personnel to be able to get in there if needed to.
That's our point as well.
Well, it should never, as Richard was saying, it should never be locked. It has to be available for emergency access and egress. I think the improvements that are being made to the sightlines are important, was that nothing's ever been done before, but I don't think it necessarily means that you're ending up in a position where you have perfect sightlines. I think it's still a compromised situation, and I think that the feeling of the planning board, when they made that recommendation, was that, this is, you're talking about you're upset because the main event?
I'm not saying that I'm sad, I'm asking that, given the fact that we're creating a complying condition with sightlines, that I'm asking that we'd be relieved from having to shut that main entrance during our important events, where you're coming in through our mechanical area, which is?
So we should just try to clarify this, just so everybody's on the same page? So we have the one occurrence during construction?
Well, during the duration of construction, which will always be through the?
Right.
That entrance, yes.
And so there's no, I'm not sure, I don't think there's any debate about that point, right?
That's correct.
Right. So then it's just about during events?
Yes.
Which you weren't speaking to, right?
That is correct.
That was the planning board's recommendation, I think.
And I think during major events, I still think it's important that, because of the extent of the traffic that will be occurring, it's still important that we avoid any situation that may involve that main entrance, because it is not perfect. So I think the planning board, and I'm pretty sure that this is what they wanted, that during main, major events, that you, I mean, you don't have to, you can aesthetically, you can just direct traffic down, you can have a sign there, or whatever, however you want to deal with it, it doesn't have to be locked, but you should be directing people to use the other entrance. And otherwise, if it's not a main event, I think you're free to use either entrance as you may wish.
Right.
But for those three or four occurrences a year, I don't think it's too much to ask for safety purposes.
Okay, listen, I'm not going to use that, it's obviously not a deal breaker for us, because we want to move forward. But I want clarification, and if that's, and I appreciate it, it's just, we're going to have, you can imagine, being in our position, Hugh's position, what's going to happen is the membership's going to say we're outlaying all this money, and we can't come in during the few times, some of these people, those are the only times that they ever come to the property.
Right, right.
So it puts us in a more difficult position, and I just thought, if there was a way we could have a discussion about it, then, and maybe this isn't the proper time to bring it up, but?
No, I think it is. Why don't you have a seat just for a minute? Because I think once council confers with the town engineer, we'll want to hear from In the interim, is there anything else that the board wants to raise or discuss?
No.
No? So Eric, just, you know, we're trying to frame this correctly. So the planning board, I think, has made a recommendation, which has nothing, I think, to do with the town engineer and his separate findings, right?
Right, he has separate conditions. So in discussions with the town engineer, the proposed improvements, I believe, are supposed to be making the entrance compliant with safety stand, with actual safety standards. As I think Mr. Bonaparte stated, the thought was, with the heavier traffic, it would still be better to come through the more, the better access. I mean, the only suggestion I had, possibly the discussion I had with the town engineer is that we include that condition with the additional provision, that if the town engineer determines that, based upon the level of traffic that comes in during those events, that he sees during those events, that the entrance is safe to use, it could, he could give authority to open it at some point in the future. So that would be a compromise if the board is comfortable with that. If not, you can keep the condition as is, and, you know, the applicant could always come in and attempt, you know, for an amendment at some time in the future, if they can demonstrate it's safe.
Just help me with, alternatively, I guess, as a third option. So if this board does not necessarily agree with the findings of the recommendation of the planning board, as it relates to this entrance during particularly these major events, what's the procedure?
You're the determining authority. They make a recommend, that is a recommendation to you. You're not obligated to accept any of those recommendations.
Did the planning board specifically put this in? I don't see, I don't know, where is that?
I thought, I believe it was in one of the planning board's recommendations.
But then what's the point of them doing the work on the front entrance, then, I wonder?
It's for the balance of, you know, the facility, they were only talking about large events, when you're going to have a lot of traffic and people, you know, the heavier traffic than you would normally. Normally, I think the use is such that it's fine, people will, would be able to use that, not, you wouldn't have a lot of traffic that you had to contend with. But for the large events, I mean?
Well, how, I guess I?
That road is extremely compromised. I don't know if you've ever driven down it.
Yeah, I've lived here for 34 years.
Yeah.
What about a security guard during events?
Hey, Rich, could you give us your wisdom on this, you know, just?
I don't, I mean, for where they are, if Bob was okay and they can meet the sightlines, then I don't see why it would have to be brought down. You're only moving it down, you know, what, 600 feet or something away from where you are now, so you're really not changing. I think if they're going to leave the entrance the way it was, where you're not, you know, when you look either right or left, you're not seeing vehicles coming one way or the other, then yeah, you would definitely want to come out of the service entrance. But they are going to have, am I right, Bob, they're going to have the 200 and whatever feet of sightline to meet the minimum? 25 miles, but, yeah, so.
And we were going to sign a condition?
Sorry, the microphone, please.
We were going to sign a condition citing that we would be doing maintenance to maintain that sightline in perpetuity as well, as one of the conditions that we were going to commit to.
So Eric, if we suggested that the resolution be drafted, allowing for that entrance to be open during main events, of course, if the town, in their wisdom, comes to some different conclusion over time, a further requirement could be made of the applicant?
You couldn't add in conditions after the fact, the town couldn't add in conditions on the special use permit unless the applicant came back before them.
Okay.
So any conditions have to be included now. There could, as I said, there could be provision that in the future that may be eliminated. I mean, right now, you know, we could look into this issue and have a discussion. You're going to be coming back to finalize the resolution at that point in time. I think it would be appropriate for, you know, the town engineer, director of planning, we'll look into this issue a little more before the next one. At this point, I think we'll include the, we would include that, if that's, if the majority of the board thinks that's appropriate.
I was always under the impression that, when it came to the special use permit, that this board has continuing jurisdiction over that permit.
To enforce the permit, correct, yeah.
But if we find that what it was, what we granted needed some tune-up or perks, or whatever you want to call it, we are not allowed to do that, is that what you're telling me? That if we find that we've granted something, and it's not quite working the way we thought it was going to work, we don't have the authority to modify it?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd look in, it depends on the condition, but I would want to look into that and make sure that would be within your purview to do that, you know, sort of unilaterally.
Because my feeling, when I read the report from Bob, the construction restriction, to me, is totally reasonable. I think that's great. Also, the fact that they're doing all these improvements, I never considered the closing of the main entrance as a necessity, because of all the work that's going, proposed to be done, to make this a safer entrance and to make it more usable. But in the future, if we find that it's not working, that's what I want to know, do we have any way to modify it?
Authority to change it at that point? I can, I will look into that before we finalize the resolution. I'll also consult with the director of planning and Bob to determine what they think is the best, you know, what would be best?
The way I'm looking at it right now is that the, like I said, and I'll reiterate, the construction restriction is absolutely reasonable, and I wouldn't want to vary from that. But the requirement that we're making them spend all this money and improve their entrance and lengthen the sightlines, et cetera, et cetera, to me is telling, if I were them, I would be telling me that they're making my entrance usable, why can't I use it? So I tell you the truth, I'm for letting them use it, if they meet all the conditions of improvement that we require. I may be premature in even saying this, because I wasn't sure if the planning board's recommendation was something that we just would take, like you just said, and accept it or not, or if the planning board had some kind of jurisdiction on this that made their recommendation more solid.
Right.
But if it's coming to us, and you're asking me, as of right now, unless something changes, this is the way I feel.
Right. That's perfectly acceptable, and if any additional information were to come up before the, your final, your final resolution?
We're not voting on a resolution tonight, anyway.
Right, exactly.
But if we draw it up, I'd like it drawn up in that manner, in my opinion, in my opinion.
So for the next meeting, I'll make a proposal, but for our next meeting, we'll ask that you draft the resolution. We will hear from you as it relates to this point, we'll make a final determination, and then vote on the resolution.
Right, that would be appropriate.
Okay. So do you have anything final to say? Yes.
And I may be stating the obvious, but in addition to improving our own safety is egress, ingress and egress, that we are also taking a town road and making it, I think, safer for, as we discussed on site, for everybody that uses Campfire Road. So I think it's mutually beneficial.
Okay, thank you. So I'll, I'm sorry, I'll start by proposing that we ask council to draft a resolution as it relates to SECR with a negative declaration. Do we need a second on that? No?
No, you can just do a straw poll.
So just a straw vote, if we just go down the line, everybody in favor of that?
Negative deck, aye?
Yes, negative deck?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And then secondly, I move that we authorize council to draft special permit resolution, incorporating those recommendations that we've heard tonight and heard previously. The one, I believe, the one open issue that we would like to hear more about before or at the next meeting relates to this main entrance and the circumstances as to when it should be open, when it should be closed, and we will then hear from the board and vote on that point, along with the total resolution at the next meeting. Everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Aye.
Yeah, aye? Okay.
Is it the consensus of the board right now, though, that it should be open during, you know, based on the information you have, or you want to wait until you get additional information? Or is it, I think, Mr. Giudiner said, his thought was that it would, should remain open during the, it could remain open during events?
I would like to hear from town planner first, and she's had input from the planning board. I want to, if I'm misreading it, what they suggested or said, then?
We'll leave both alternatives in the resolution, and then that way you can make the final decision that night.
Okay.
And then you should take, you should vote to, find out if there's anybody else here to speak to the application, and then close the public hearing tonight, if you think it's appropriate.
Also, in drafting the permit, there was going to be some mention of the membership level as a continuing condition, and not that, I think it might change, but in the event it does change, we want to be able to deal with any situations that might arise as a result thereof.
Is that just for clarification? So is that, is there a threshold in terms of the change?
I don't know how, I would like you to draft it in as flexible a way as possible, not that it is, I don't want to control their bylaws, but I do want to know, I want the?
That if they exceed the existing membership levels, they would have to come back before the board to, you know, identify how many additional members, their expectations are, and what impacts that may have?
That changes any of the impact.
You mean the existing levels that are in their bylaws?
Right.
Because I think their level of membership is lower than their bylaws is right now.
What's, what is permitted right now, exactly, if they want to change? If that's what's, if that's what's appropriate to you?
I think that's?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We are, as we've stated prior to, our threshold in the bylaws are probably 30, 40 members short of that, and that's been kind of the healthy, healthy number. We've never exceeded it, and we're fine with the bylaws as they're written.
Okay.
Can't get that many people to start fires with, you know?
You know why? It's a lot easier with the lighter.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No. I move that we close a public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Wait, are we closing or are we adjourning?
No, we're closing tonight.
We're closing, okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you all very much. Best of the holiday.
You too.
Looks like the Hakim's attorney is here. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
We should take them now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, we'll take you now.
Thank you, Lee Foundation. I was on Long Island getting back here from an afternoon meeting, so Long Island, expressway traffic, so, thank you. So for the record, Brad Schwartz from Zaren and Steinmetz, representing the Hakims. I'm joined this evening by Mrs. Hakim, as well as their owner's rep, Mr. Ari Sherazan. I know we said last year, final extension. However, this request truly is unlike all the other prior applications for an extension. The Hakims have been actively processing their building permit applications. Mr. Mukari and Mr. Siole have both been involved in that process. I think we really are very close on the goal line, if not with one foot in the end zone. So I would ask that?
You know, it's subject to videotape review.
No videotape review.
Yeah, right.
And so, we just want to, for the town's records, just make sure that for the paperwork and the files, that the variance is still alive and kicking until such time as the building permit is issued. So that's why we're here this evening.
So what length extension are you requesting?
I guess a couple ways we could do this. It could either just be until such time as the building permit is issued, or if you want to do it just like?
We need to be a little more specific than that, so?
One month, two months? I guess I would defer to?
I've talked over with Bob earlier, and I think we came up 60 days, you know, till two months should be enough time. Bob, am I correct with what you had outstanding?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, did you say two months or?
So two months.
Two months.
Would be fine.
Okay. Sound reasonable?
Perfect.
Okay. So that's, no, go ahead.
I'm the guy that said never again. You're going to have to change my mind somehow. Why? What's going on? Why is this taking so long? What's happening?
So, I haven't been involved in the day-to-day with reviewing the plans and so forth. I do know that plans were submitted earlier in the year. There's been the normal back-and-forth comments, responses to comments, there's been stormwater review by Mr. Siole. I think it's just the normal evolution of the building permit process. There are four building permits being applied for. There's the garage, there's the main house, there's the generator, and there's the swimming pool. Do I have those four?
There's four permits, and it is very complex, you know, house to design, and there's a lot of, lot going into it, so the review process is a little time-consuming.
So in the opinion of the building department, they have been diligently pursuing their application?
Yes, they have.
So you've just changed my mind?
Sounds like the building department changed your mind.
Okay.
So you need two months to start? Is that right?
Just an extension for?
An extension of two months to start and then a year to finish from the date?
A year to finish, right. Okay.
Yes?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Good luck on the expressway.
Chang?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. I guess I make the, I'm going to have additional revision for the provision, I mean, the privacy screen.
Yes.
So basically, increase another row of planting to stagger the two rows of evergreen, Leland cypress.
Have you had any further discussions with the one neighbor who I think was here last?
Twelve. Yeah, twelve. Yeah, I, well, I emailed them with my phone number and email.
Okay.
They didn't reply to the email. I sent this, emailed them as well before. I'm not sure if he's here today, but yeah.
Okay. Okay, you did not hear anything back?
From them, no, yeah. I provided all my contact information and everything, including this, and yeah.
You sent them this also?
I emailed them this, yeah.
And the neighbor would have been aware of this meeting, that this was being held again, I suppose? We didn't have to send out another note on this?
No, but the neighbor was at the prior hearing when it was adjourned to the night's meeting. We wouldn't, we would not typically send out another formal notice unless there was a, you know, large gap in between the hearings.
Okay. Where do you find Leland cypress plants, trees?
I found them during the springtime in Costco. They have, they often have a lot of them out there. Actually, last year I bought like 40 of them, planted, and sometimes they're available in Costco, too. Actually, some of the Leland cypress I planted last year were damaged by a deer I got from Home Depot, replaced them this year, but it's ongoing, basically. I guess once they are reaching a certain height, and the deer can reach them and establish, they will be fine, yeah.
Right, okay.
So what's going to be done specifically with the plantings, and what size trees? Is this all in here, or? How do we?
So how many additional, for the record, how many additional trees are you proposing to plant?
Currently, in that subject area, only the east side of the shed need additional planting, because on the north side and the south side, there are already existing sugar maples there.
Okay.
And on the west side of the entrance, the door.
Okay.[1731.76]
So on the east side, that's bordering the twelve with Lawland property. And currently, there are three Leland cypress already in there, and I propose to plant another three staggered. And each of the trees is going to grow to, with the width is about ten to twenty feet, I think. And the subject area is about fifteen feet, so that's basically completely, yeah, blocked there.
And what size will the trees be when you plant them?
I plan to plant on the five to six feet tall evergreens, and that's the typical size for Leland cypress, reason being the, I talked with the landscapers, and they basically saying, because this is a fast-growing tree, most of the time they carry on this size, because it's not economical to plant the bigger ones. Usually, the bigger ones are the slow-growings. They like to, yeah.
Now, when do you propose to do the planting? In the spring?
The earliest will be the spring, because I can't do enough, for sure, yeah.
No, I'm...
Yeah, even the shed, I probably have to wait until at least the snow has melted, so, yeah.
Okay. So, would you be installing? Go ahead, yes.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, just in consultation with the building inspector, he advised me that there was a, there were trees cut down on this property, and there was a tree...
Steve Coleman issued a report, right?
Yeah, a tree replanting plan.
Correct.
I'm not sure if that has been fully complied with yet, and I think it may be appropriate, you could ask the applicant, but maybe appropriate to have Mr. Coleman review this plan. That would probably be appropriate, maybe appropriate up to the board, to have him review this plan. But certainly to make sure it coordinates with the existing plan, and there's not sort of duplication of efforts between the two plans and how they, how they work together. That's just, you know, I thought the building inspector and I had, given that there has been, that there are other plantings required for this property, and maybe some specifics about what needs to be in this plan that the environmental coordinator could provide.
So could you, sir, just give us a status on, have you begun any of that repopulation of the...
Yes. Actually, I have a list of all the trees I planted there. It's also in there.
Sure, go ahead. Please.
Yeah, I guess the question would be whether that's been signed off on by...
Yeah, which I do not know if it was.
So, I plant a lot of the Leland cypress along the borders.
Okay.
And also some big ones, big Norway spruce at the front yard as well, which is like about ten to twelve feet tall, big ones. And also a lot of the, I have an exact detail of the list, but the total number is like a hundred and ninety plants, including trees and shrubs and everything, and...
I'm sorry, that you have planted?
Right. It's more than the required number. I haven't officially closed it with Mr. Coleman yet.
Right.
Because a lot of the Leland cypress were damaged by the deer last year.
Right.
And I replaced quite a few of them this year.
Okay.
And I'm still doing all the spraying and everything, but it's, and also including some of the other shrubs were damaged by deer, too. And I keep replacing them with different species, try to experiment a little bit. But even the existing ones now, they should be more than enough to fulfill the requirement. But I'm still planting, and because, you know, it's, yeah.
So, Mr. Coleman hasn't yet signed off on the work that you've done, right?
Not yet, right.
Yeah. Do you have plans now for that to happen during the winter, or would that wait until the spring also?
Well, I'm planning to wait until next summer, because I try to, I'm planning out to plant some more in the spring.
Okay.
And change some of the Leland cypress with Norway spruce at the front, so that I can, you know, it's a little bit better privacy from the street, because I found that it's kind of obvious on the street.
Okay.
And Norway spruce is a little bit better, more deer-resistant.
Okay. So I think what we're going to...
That's why I was holding it, and to try to hold it until summer, when, you know, everything is more finalized to...
You're not in it? Sorry, finish, finish your thought, I'm sorry.
But despite that, that's a separate from, because compared to that, this small number, three, or six, whatever it is, it's basically nothing compared to that, yeah.
When were you planning, I'm sorry, did you already say this? I'm sorry. When were you planning to install the shed?
I plan to, once the snow melt, like next March, February or March, as soon as it's practical, and if everything is approved, I can, yeah.
Okay. Would it be a hardship for you if you were to wait until the spring to do the shed and the plantings at the same time?
The planting of...
That you're proposing here?
For the revision?
For this?
Oh, for the, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, it doesn't matter. I mean, the tree, as soon as the ground is, you know, it's not too hard to dig, I guess. We can plant it anytime. Yeah. I don't have any particular, you know...
I'm just, the point I'm just trying to make is, what we'd like to see, I believe, is you put up the shed, and you then do the screening around the shed, in part so that your neighbors and the board are satisfied that the shed has been properly screened.
Oh, you mean plant the tree first?
No, no, no. Put the shed up and immediately put the screening up around the shed.
Uh-huh. Oh, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Does that sound, okay?
Yeah, that may means that delay the shed installation a little bit, because I think it's better I wait until March or even April to plant the trees.
Okay.
And then the shed, I could do it probably in late February. I don't know, depend on the, yeah, but maybe March. But it doesn't matter, yeah, it's not a big deal, so...
Okay. Because in the interim, here we will, after this meeting, we'll ask Mr. Coleman to look at your plan here.
Okay.
Okay? And he'll come back to the board and you, and let us know that this makes sense.
Uh-huh.
Okay? And then, then we would ask that in the spring, you would move forward, presuming that the board approves the application, that you're, that you move forward with the shed and the plantings that will result in the screening of the shed.
Okay.
That, that concept seem okay to you?
Okay. So you mean, should I make appointment with Mr. Coleman?
No, I think we can, we can refer it to...
I can refer it to Steve.
Yeah.
We have your, we have your contact information on the application.
Okay. And he will be in touch with you if he has any question about it?
Questions or comments on this plan?
Oh, okay, okay.
He'll, he'll contact you so that if you need to revise it or something, because he sees something that needs to be done, you can do it. And then, at our next meeting, we can then...
Vote on your application.
Oh, okay, I see, I see.
Okay.
So guys, from this point to next meeting, I just wait for Mr. Coleman to contact me if he has any additional information. Otherwise, I should come back next meeting to see the...
Yes, you should plan to come back.
You should plan on meeting, you should plan a meeting with Steve Coleman to discuss the size of the trees that are being put in, how many...
So he should, he should contact Steve?
I'll give Steve his information.
Okay.
It can't hurt for you to reach out to him also, but I will give him your information.
Okay, okay.
How does the, what, the requirement for the replantings for his other issue, how does that tie into, or how can we tie it into this process, so that we know that in addition to complying or doing what is going to be required by this application, he has also complied with the balance of, you know, what Steve has required pursuant to...
I think that's already become, it's become incumbent upon the applicant as, separately, to comply with what the...
That is a requirement. I don't believe the board could condition completion of that other tree removal plan, or tree, tree planting plan, unless somehow that tree planting plan also provides additional screening that helps to...
Well, that's what I'm not sure of.
Well, that's what we're all not sure. We don't know what that plan is until Mr. Coleman tells us, you know, whether it works with it. If there is additional plantings in that tree planting plan that may provide additional screening, I think it would be good if this board knew that.
Right.
And could say those plantings need to go in as well at the same time.
When it's referred to Steve, would you indicate to him that we would like to know how the two may tie in together, or...
Right.
Yeah, we can let him know.
I also think it would be appropriate for the applicant, again, just to avoid any problems in the future, to provide, you know, confirmation that the neighboring property owner received, was sent this plan. I think it would be helpful, for the record, just to make sure, you know, because these things sometimes come back, and then somebody says they didn't get it, so...
I don't know what's the best way, like, mail in certified mail?
Have an email, email confirmation of his email address. I mean, it would be helpful just to have confirmation. Typically, in this situation, I think the board likes to have confirmation that the neighbor is in agreement with what's being proposed. That's up to, you know, up to the board again, but...
Adriana, do you have, do you know?
How about...
He hasn't been.
He hasn't been? Okay.
Yeah. So how about this, if I meet with Steve and confirm sort of like a final plan for the screening of the shed?
Yes.
And once we got that final plan finalized, and maybe I can send them, the neighbor, another copy of that. And I don't know if there's going to be any change from that one to the current one, but if there is any or not, I will send another copy to them, maybe, I don't know, certified mail or whatever.
That's a good idea.
And then, just so that we have proof that he got that.
Right.
And then next month, and come back to the meeting.
Yes.
I guess we can have a result, hopefully.
Yes, yes.
Before we, before we close this off, I need some clarification on the revised site plan that we have. Normally, when we get a planting plan, we get a list of the trees or shrubs, et cetera. We get dimensions as to where they're going to put and the spacings. This doesn't have that. Is this going to be a...
Well, that's the cover page.
Is this going to be okay? Well...
Well, I think that's why we need the...
Usually it's, usually it's right on the plan.
We need the environmental coordinator to state what other, what additional requirements.
Right.
Certainly, the board can request that...
It doesn't look like what we usually, all these little green dots could be anything, really.
That area, the size of the screening area is only fifteen to twenty feet wide.
Well, that's...
And I plan to put in six large trees, so they are basically ten feet from each other and staggered in two rows.
Right.
There isn't much of other ways you can sort of lay them out.
For the record, we need to have it specified.
I described in the first page as well, and, yeah.
Because what you're doing on the rest of your property, or what you're doing to correct whatever deficiencies you have with Steve Coleman and your neighbor, real...
That's separated from this issue.
Doesn't have anything to do with our variance. Our variance is going to require specific screening for the specific area where the shed is going to be. And once we put it into a motion and it gets on the record, that particular area is going to have to be maintained in that way forever, where what you do on the rest of your property, you have the leeway to do almost as you please, as long as it's not outrageously wrong. So I'm just concerned that we get this all right, that we make sure that all these dimensions are in the record, so that, so that the property owner knows, and the board knows, and the town officials know what we're doing and why.
I think the applicant, you're hearing that we need specifics regarding the types of trees, the size, you know...
Location.
And that, that needs to be on the plan itself. It can't just be sort of represented here tonight, or else there's no way to enforce it.
Have Mr. Coleman help you, okay?
Oh, okay, yeah, I mean...
Steve, Steve Coleman can direct you. Environmental coordinator can direct you on how to do it.
Another additional information about, because you guys earlier mentioned about if existing replacement plan for the trees from last year's removed.
Yes.
In that plan, there is only required the numbers, and I lose requirement that the trees mostly replaced along the borders, but there isn't any specific requirement like where to put what. And I, but I put multiple replacement trees along the borders anyway, at the front and on the, on the west side. And this subject area in the replacement plan is, it does not require any trees in there, because it just, back then, I didn't plan to put a shed in there. So there is no need to put any tree in there anyway, because it's in the, in the wooded area, so...
Mr. Chairman, it'd be helpful if the applicant CCs, copies Adriana, if he is going to send email to the neighbor, so that we will have confirmation that it went through.
I think he said he didn't have their email address, right?
I, you mean the neighbors?
Yes.
I do, because Adriana forwarded me one of her emails. That's how I, I emailed both of them, there are two of them there. One is AT&amp;T email for the husband, I guess, yeah.
Make sure you CC.
I probably will send a certified mail with the final plan. This probably works better, just so that they don't say I didn't see the email, whatever. I mean, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Okay? All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Next is Gerald.
Hi.
Good evening. Michael Piccarella, I'm representing Maria and Henry Gerald to Little Pine. We have an existing single-family house, which has a non-conforming front yard setback. Because of the, of the orientation of the house, which is actually towards the driveway easement, the rear of the house actually is on Little Pine, which is considered the front. So we have an existing non-conforming front yard setback at fifty-four feet, four inches. I have some photographs of the existing rear terrace. So the plan is to expand the existing kitchen over the existing single-story terrace. So our second-story addition will be a kitchen, breakfast room addition. There's adequate screening along Little Pine. You actually can't even photograph the house from Little Pine, because you can't see it, and so it's completely screened. So we don't think this is going to be a detriment to the neighborhood. The existing front yard setback is, has always, has been there for a while, so there certainly isn't any issues with the neighbors about it. The addition will conform to the existing architecture of the house, so we think it will blend in nicely. And it's a, again, we are not increasing any further into the setback.
Couple of questions, Michael.
Sure.
First of all, we're in Newcastle.
Yes.
Not North Castle.
I apologize.
Will have to fix that plan?
Absolutely.
Okay. Second question. On your building coverage, development coverage, excuse me, development coverage, you have a proposed development coverage on your application of seventy-nine, seventy-nine square feet? Seven thousand nine hundred seventy-nine?
There is no, there's no increase, so...
But on, but on the development coverage on your calculation, it's eighty-five, seventy-four. Which one is correct?
Oh.
If we can get the record right on that. On your plan, you're showing the seventy-nine, seventy-nine, but on your app, it's eighty-five, seventy-four, and, I mean, on your calculations, but on the app, it's seventy-nine, seventy-nine. We've got to pick a number here.
Yeah, it'll be the seventy-nine. Again, we're not increasing the...
No, no, I know, I just, I just noticed a discrepancy in the numbers, and we got to make sure that the, we resolve that. So we need to, we need to correct the calculation, well, do you keep the calculation sheets in the record as well? So we need to correct that. I'll give you the corrections after. Okay? Because I have them here. And so we'll keep the one that you show on your plan, the seventy-nine, seventy-nine. You'll correct the Newcastle, rather than North Castle.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
Other than that, it's pretty good. Okay.
Any questions by the board? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No. I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who'd like to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion of the application of Henry Gerald for... We have five-foot-eight-inch variance, I'm going to give you six feet, just to be sure. Six-foot variance to enlarge their kitchen, be approved for the following reasons. Branding of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There is no other method feasible to achieve the desired end without the variance. This is already a legally existing, non-conforming structure, which creates, which creates a problem with any kind of addition or renovation with regard to variances. In this particular instance, this is not a substantial variance. This is not a self-created hardship and because of the fact of it being legally existing, non-conforming with, with no fault of the applicant. And you can have six months to start, one year to finish. We don't need any measurements since it's on the, on the existing structure.
No, existing structure, we have all the measurements already.
Right, so we're okay with that and you have six months to start, one year to finish.
Terrific. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, have your variance.
Thank you.
And next is Allison.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Michael Testa. I'm here with Stephanie Allison, the owner of the property at 351 Whipplea Road. We're here tonight, Ms. Allison is in the process of trying to sell her house and in the process of doing a title search on the property, it was found out that the upper floor of the residence did not have a certificate of occupancy. And as a result, we have gone through the process of trying to attempt to get this legitimized. And while we were doing that, there was two other items that came up in the course of the review. One was the, the total development coverage and the other was an FAR. I'd like to try to speak to the FIR first. Based on the age of the residence, which was started in 2005, and we have the pool house, the pool and the, and the residence, all of the structures that were built on site actually predate the village's adoption of the FAR requirements, which came into effect in 2007. So, I would state that that particular criteria is a pre-existing, non-conforming legality and not applicable in this matter.
Was, was the house originally approved for occupancy on the third floor?
No, sir, it was not.
That, that would not change the FAR.
The FAR is not going to change.
The FAR is going to be the same no matter what.
That is correct.
Whether it was legalized or not.
Yes, whether it was attic or habitable attic.
I think perhaps if I were reviewing it the first time, I might feel differently about approving it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think there was any determination that an FAR variance was required here by the building department.
I think when we talked, I thought we didn't put it on the application because it was a pre-
You know, I wanted to address it.
I think he just wanted to clarify.
At least tonight to clarify for sure for the record.
I would have been asking how, how it got-
Why it was like that.
Yeah, why is it so far out of whack with what our code-
I mean, that would probably be the rationale as to why.
So, you're satisfied that it's a pre-existing, non-conforming?
Yes.
Legal?
Yes.
With regards to the other two items, the other is the development coverage criteria. Again, every structure that is on this property is pre-existing and has certificates of occupancies, which I've included in your file to show that they've actually been granted COs by the town. We were not under the, we didn't realize that they actually were issues on development coverage and the story height issue. So, as a result, I was, part of the application is that we fill out the appropriate coverage calculation standards. And in doing so, clearly it was determined that based on my calculations, we're in excess of these criteria by some small amounts, but nevertheless, we still are in excess of the requirements for development coverage. And I want to at least have that documented for the record that the original calculation that we have is not consistent with the current calculation that I did. And as a result, there was approximately 534 square feet of additional percentage or square footage that was required under this plan versus the original application. As far as the story height is recurrent, required by the town's criteria, if we exceed the, if we finish the attic, it's classified as a third story. And one of the requirements is that it's not, not permitted as a third story under your zoning. So, as a result, one of the standards that do come into play when we start to evaluate the code compliance is that the building is totally sprinkled. And in this case, the building was actually totally sprinkled from day one, including the attic. And in your packet, you'll see an actual sprinkler plan that shows the layout in 2005, showing the attic improvements that are currently there today. So, there, there is a plan that you see there that depicts that this was always the intent. However, it was never applied for a permit with the town. The, and I met Mr. Boulkeri out in the field and we reviewed the issues that are required for compliance. And there's a couple of New York State Building Code criteria that has to be applied for, for compliance, such as a proper egress window and smokes and CO detectors, as well as certain modifications to the doorway openings, which I have shown on the drawing that I've included in your file to try to legitimize this. But other than that-
That work has occurred?
No, no work has done yet. You know, the work, it's just finished up there, but there was no improvements for compliance yet. And those are, Ms. Allison is certainly, is prepared to do that work so she can sell her house. They're in the process of selling it. Russell Herewood, Harmony Stern, her agent, where we, we can't market it yet until we actually resolve these issues.
How many bedrooms are in the house?
Stephanie?
And what is the septic approved for?
Why, there's no change to anything. The, the house on the other, on the rest of the site is exactly per the original approvals. There's been no change at all proposed, nor are we attempting to.
But the upstairs, that finished attic?
There'll be no, that's not a, they're taking away all privacy, so there will not be a bedroom up in the attic.
Why is it not a bedroom?
Because you need privacy to have a bedroom.
Does it not have a door leaving?
Doors are being taken off.
We are proposing if you look-
That's part of the proposals, have removed the doors.
So, right now, there is a door?
Yes, there is.
So, right now, it is a bedroom?
I don't believe it's being used. When I went up there, it wasn't set up.
It's not a legal bedroom if, in, in the sense of a legal bedroom. I mean, it's, we are proposing to make those recreation areas. We know we cannot market them as bedrooms.
But if this house was being built and with the way it exists now, wouldn't it be deemed a bedroom or?
They could be looked at as bedrooms, correct?
Yes.
When we went there, when I did my field inspection, they were not being used as bedrooms. I think one was being used as an exercise room and one was a rec. But that's why, that's why, but that's why we're having them do the changes to the doorways.
Taking the doorways down.
Taking the doorways out and enlarging them so you can't just come and put a door back in.
So, they can't put a door back in?
That is correct.
Correct.
Why can't they put a door back in?
Well-
In a large-
But it's an oversized.
It's, it's going to be an oversized.
You, you-
I shouldn't, I, we can, we can never, as a building inspector, we can never say what somebody's going to do once we leave.
Is there a bathroom upstairs?
Yes.
Yes.
And closets?
Yep.
Got everything else.
Well, closets, you don't need closets.
There's, there's storage under sloping areas. If you look at the knee wall heights that are depicted on the drawing, they're under a sloping roof of about five feet and change.
How is the house being marketed for that room? What's, what is being said in the-
They are recreation areas once the marketing goes into effect. We haven't actively marketed it yet because we can't. And it's clear and the owner is willing to sign affidavits. And I'm sure Harmony, here's the marketing agent, she's certainly willing in her listing agency sheet to show that this is recreation space and a bathroom not to be used as habitable bath, bedrooms.
Mr. Chairman, if this was in a basement and they weren't coming, they didn't need to come to you and this was the same setup exactly in the basement, this is the same exact procedure we would take with opening the doors to a larger opening to something that's not a normal door size. So, yes, somebody could, in theory, put it back to a door, but it would be a lot harder. You know, we, we don't want, when we walk out the door for somebody just to put it back on.
I wanted to export because it was, it just jumps out at you.
It jumps out at us all the time.
So, when this was originally built, what, what was this? And then when the house was-
It was an unfinished attic originally.
And then when was the-
And then the improvements were done in 2008. But if you look at this, if I could just show you the sprinkler drawing?
Yeah.
If that's enclosed there, if you just take a peek at that, which is in your packet, it actually shows the layout of this as the finished space you see.
That's right, so, so it's sprinkled up here as well?
Totally.
When was the house purchased?
It was built in, permitted in 2005, I'm not sure when it was purchased.
If that's what, you bought it in 2005?
So, Rich, you've, you've spelled out these remedial measures that if the applicant pursues, the house will then be in compliance.
Correct.
So, that a revised CO can be issued.
Well, a CO for the third floor, yes.
A CO.
For the third floor.
Yeah, okay.
Before we go too far, I'm doing the math errors again. You have a couple of little minor errors that I'm going to fix up for you. Also, you kind of gipped yourself, you said you had 534 square feet over development.
That was according to Mr. Boulkeri.
You really only have 457, so that's a help.
That helps.
But you did make a, a couple of minor errors on your building coverage calculation, which I fixed up for you and I'll give it to our secretary.
Okay.
If you need copies, I'm sure she could provide them to you, but just to keep the record straight.
Okay.
They're not major, they don't affect the application in a dramatic way, but we, we should have our records.
Okay. I mean, I did the, I did the breakdown based on triangles and polygons and like-
Yeah, no, I'm talking, I'm talking about, a lot of people have a problem with our formula for figuring FAR, for figuring the development coverage. It's not unusual and some people come in a little, a little less. My computer program always seems to come, nobody's contested me, it always seems to come right.
I'll defer to your comments, sir.
So, if you'll defer to me, we'll get the-
I certainly will.
After we're all done here. Thank you.
Let the record show, there's no one in the audience to speak to this application. Any other comments by the board?
No.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who'd like to make a motion?
Am I going to have to order?
I'll make it.
I'll make, all right. I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that the application of Stephanie's Lassen for legalization of a finished third floor in her residence be approved for the following reasons. Again, the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. The finishing was done without a building permit, but not with malicious intent. I'm going to say your builder didn't tell you you needed one, which is the usual thing and I'm going to believe that. Okay? The, the requested variance is, in this instance, not substantial. The granting of the variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical environment. The hardship is self-created in that the applicant knew, knew or should have known that this project could not have gone forth without the proper approvals and permits.